At this time, we'll open up our public hearing for Resolution 007-19, Edgewood-Joppa Enterprise Zone Expansion. Mr. Parrish, welcome. Mr. Adler, welcome. Floor is yours, gentlemen. You need Mila? They just think you are. Get Mila, Joe. Mila.
Council President, Council, thank you very much for having us tonight. We're here to talk about the potential expansion of the Edgewood and Joppa enterprise. To explain a little bit about, yeah, we got it. About what we're here to talk about. This is a map showing our enterprise zones in our county. An enterprise zone is an area in which policies to encourage economic growth and development are implemented. The idea is to forego a little tax revenue now in order to gain a lot of tax revenue later. But the key is the creation of new jobs. That's always at the head of the list, enumerating the hoped-for benefits of any enterprise zone. This is a map showing the two enterprise zones currently approved in Harford County. We're looking to expand the blue map shown here to offer additional properties to access incentives. For a development to take advantage of an incentive offered in one of these zones, they would complete an application to be verified by our office that explains the capital investment made and the number of jobs created. Being in an enterprise zone also makes properties eligible for the BGE seed program or smart energy and economic development, reducing charges for service extensions and temporarily decreasing energy distribution charges. There are about 280,000 acres of land in the county. As you can see, little over 13,500 acres are in our enterprise zones, so little under 5% of our land. Each of these zones has their own set of requirements in order for a parcel to qualify to take advantage of the tax credits available. As you can see, a significant amount of capital investment has been made in those areas of the county since 2006. In the Edgewood-Joppa enterprise zone, a middle, minimal capital investment of $100,000 and a minimum of five new jobs must be created. In the Aberdeen-Havity-Greece enterprise zone, for companies with less than 10 employees, a minimum capital investment of $100,000 plus two new employees must be hired. And for companies of 11 or more employees, a minimum capital investment of $125,000 and five new employees is required. This shows the areas that are currently in the Edgewood-Joppa zone and the parcels to be added. I want to note that any particular project should be separated out of this discussion. What we're here for tonight is the discussion of expanding the enterprise zone itself to cover the underlying parcels that could get developed in the future. Any and all projects that wish to proceed and may benefit from being in this designated zone must still go through the same approval process that they would if they were outside of the zone. We are in no way trying to circumvent any approval process for a land development, simply putting the tools in place to use as economic development incentives when a project does choose to move forward. The state gives us two dates every year that we can make application for enterprise zones, April 15th and October 15th. The state recommended that we make our amendments for the April 15th deadline, which is bringing us here tonight. That's in part because we certify our companies for the easy enterprise zone tax credits, and our deadline for submission for that is October 1st. It will be difficult for us to certify companies before the expansion is complete if we waited until that October 15th date. Each time we make this application, it takes an intensive amount of staff time. The applications are over 100 pages worth of information to compile, so we try to limit the number of times we come before you with a change. This is a list of the parcels we are requested to be added into the enterprise zone. You can see that their sizes vary greatly, but as you'll see on the next slide, this move will bring all of our business parks in the corridor into the designated enterprise So just to take a minute to explain the incentives. The state of Maryland, through the Department of Commerce, provides real property and state income tax credits for businesses located in a Maryland enterprise zone in return for job creation and investments. Simply stated, companies can get a one-time, $1,000 tax credit for each qualified new employee filling a newly created position, and a 10-year tax credit against local real property taxes on a portion of the real property expansion, renovation, or capital improvement. The amount of credit is 80% of the eligible assessment in each of the first five years, and then the credit decreases 10% annually for the subsequent five years. The benefit or tax credit is based on the difference in assessed value following the completion of the project. For example, if a property or raw land is assessed at $1 million currently, and following the improvements is assessed at 2.2 million, the benefit will be calculated off of the $1.2 million difference. We would still get that $1 million tax that we get currently. Enterprise zone credits cover a 10-year period of time. So given the example above, the credit would be 80% of the $1.2 million as a credit for the first five years, and then 70% in year six, 60% in year seven, 50% in year eight, 40% in year nine, 30% in year 10, and then year 11, the entire $2.2 million value would be property taxable. Happy to answer any questions the council may have. We have a list of some properties, too, that have taken advantage of this if you need any examples.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Adler, anything you would like to add?
No, it does not.
Okay. Council, this is your time for questions. Mr. Janzer-Dennett?
Thank you, Mr. Parrish, Mr. Adler. Understanding the, they get the difference of, like you said, 1 million if it goes to 2 million, the difference of 1 million. Do we know what the total cost of these new projects is going to be on those enterprise zones that they're adding?
Depends on the appraised value at the end of the project.
Yeah, but is there anybody that's said, hey, we're going to build a 2 million square foot facility, and it's going to be worth 10 million, and the difference is 6 million? Is anybody, is there plans, or no, there's no plans yet for that?
Nothing has been submitted at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was my question.
Anyone else? Mr. Johnson?
Gentlemen, do we have, do we have a forecast of how many jobs that the enterprise zone would bring to this, these particular parcels of land?
The additions?
Yes.
The numbers, the numbers that we were given were, would be anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500, based on the size of the land. But nothing has been submitted, once again, on, on, on most of the land, so we don't have an exact, but based on the size and the zoning that's in place and the types of projects that have been done on those in the past.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, the, I guess when the lines are drawn on here, why don't we use geographical boundaries or something? For instance, if we're using an enterprise zone to, to boost an area, why don't we boost the whole area? So follow 95 all the way up to Abington Road down, you know, I mean, I guess, why are we making these little patches and incorporating stuff that way instead of making large sections of area? If we want to be equitable and fair to everybody.
So the first answer would be that it's based on parcel, so it's divided by parcel. You could potentially take more parcels and include them, but you're limited to, I believe, 10% increase at any one time. So we were limited to a 10% increase, and this, I think, is pretty close to that number.
Can I add on to that also? Originally, when the maps were drawn, it was based off of the then zoning that was in place for, for parcels of land, but with comprehensive rezoning, when properties went and got changed, that's how, that's why the map looks like the way it does. So we've also had to go on, go and fix some of the maps as well, because there were parcels that were partially, let's say, residential, partially commercial, and there's still some that are out there that actually need to be fixed, and that's probably something that will be coming to you on a future date to fix. But that's why the map looks like the way it is.
Yeah, I can see, I see a lot of large areas that are clearly residential, so that makes sense why that's not in there. What initiates the process? How's it start?
Generally, comprehensive rezoning is one of the things that we'll look at. If we have a property where it's partially in, partially out of the zone, and we have a company that actually files for, to take, to take advantage of the credit, and then we actually have to fix the map because they're part in, part out, and it's, it's very hard to decipher if they're getting a credit or not, so we have to actually fix the map that way. That's generally how it goes. We try to, we try to stay on top of it, and that's one of the reasons why a few years back, we added all, all the business parks off of 95, off of 40, to, in 95, to be in, in the zone, to keep everything equal, to keep everything fair, and to actually be able not only to allow businesses here in the county be equal, but for us, when we're, when we're competing with other jurisdictions who have these zones, to be able to compete with them. So we tried to actually put all, all the, you know, all the, all the business parks, like I said, to keep it equitable. So, and they're also not necessarily symmetrical in the way that they're, that they're designed, so that's why it kind of looks like.
Now, you've brought up a couple times in the presentation, the, the state part of the program, the state partnership. Can you explain that a little bit more? What's the state's role?
The enterprise zone is a state program that we administer, we become a part of, and we join in to take advantage of, of the benefits along with.
Now, is there a cap what the state puts on it?
The, the state also reimburses us for half the cost of the credit. So they, it's a split partnership in that way.
That was my next question, actually. What's the cap on what the state allows to go into the program, and then how much do we get back from the state as a partner? So it's half? And do they have a cap on the program?
I'm not familiar with the, the cap, so the, the, the total cost of the, of all the enterprise tax credits last year was about $1.2 million, meaning that the state also provided $1.2 million in the county, was foregone revenue of $1.2 million.
So regardless of us putting this in or not, if the state, I'm sorry, if we do put this in and the application goes through, the state is guaranteed to match whatever we're, so there's, as long as we approve it, they're going to put the money in?
Yeah, that's, that's in, that's in state law, how that, that's worked.
And if the state deems that that's not a viable option, or once we send this application in, what, you said, oh, the 15th of this month? So if, if it goes in and the state looks at it and says, ah, we don't agree with it, what happens then?
I don't know that that's ever happened, but they would.
They may ask for a revision here or there.
Yeah, I mean, in that case, those, those properties wouldn't be in the enterprise zone. So then, if they are not in the enterprise zone, then they would not be, they would not be subject to the tax credit.
So the state leaves the regulation side of it, and who we opt to put in, up to us, completely? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Anyone else? Mr. Beal?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. All right, as far as expanding the enterprise zone in the Edgewood-Joppa town, now, there's no development at this time planned for that area. So the purpose of expanding the enterprise zone would be to draw development to that area. Okay?
Yeah, incentivize.
Incentivize. Okay. Yes, yeah.
I was going to say, there, there is one that is, and that is the Ferguson Waterworks. That property is one that there was a consolidation of three, three parcels, so it's actually part in the enterprise zone, part out of the enterprise zone. So that was, that was done, every, the ball here got rolling to start with that, to, to make sure we can get them the credit that, that they deserve for actually being in the zone, but we couldn't tell them, well, you can only get a partial credit, there are no parcels with the state, it's all or nothing, and we can't just add property or anything into the zone without speaking to you first and getting your approval and going through the whole process. Otherwise, we'd be able to update our maps, and we can't do that without kind of speaking to you folks first, so that's, that's what got the ball rolling. But other than that, everything is for future development.
Right.
To attract new business to the county.
Okay, so, but for all intentional purposes, the reason we're expanding this enterprise zone in the Edgewood-Joppa town is to attract new businesses?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that leads into my next question. Why do we expand the enterprise zone when there's already a development, say, or somebody going to build something in an area? And for my constituents, in other words, we have somebody, okay, we're definitely going to put a development here, we're going to do something here. Why are we expanding the enterprise zone?
Once again, to, to keep things equitable, to have all business parks that are off of 40 and 95 in the, in the enterprise zone, to not choose one area over another, just to keep everything equal. Once again, we went back and added all the business parks, I think it was five, five years ago, four years ago, now, that was before I got here, but now we just want to just keep that as the, as the standard, and just have everything that's in that area part of the enterprise zone.
Yeah, it's not about any one particular development at any rate. It's about, you know, like Jake said, it's a fair and equitable way to treat all of the developments the same, that they all have the same incentive to offer.
Okay, so basically, it's not just to attract new businesses, but businesses that even, you know, started to build an enterprise zone, we're just being fair and equitable in treating them like any other business? Is that what we're basically saying? So we give everybody the opportunity to apply for the tax credit. Could you go back and elaborate? Because I know, okay, even though they're part of the enterprise zone, they still have to qualify for the tax credits. Is it pretty much a formality, or what, do they actually?
They have to meet the capital, the minimum capital investment.
Okay.
So, like I said, it varies depending on the enterprise zone, whether it's $100,000 or $125,000 for the capital investment, and then also have the new job creation. It's always tied back to job creation.
Okay.
So it's based on those two factors, and if they've met those factors, then we would certify that they are in an enterprise zone, and they meet those factors, and then the state would offer the, the tax credit.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry, I missed the job creation part. How many jobs was it, how, what is that tied to?
In, in Edgewood-Joppa, it's five, five new jobs. And in, in Aberdeen-Havity-Greece, it's two new jobs for under 10 employees, and it's five new jobs for over.
Okay. So basically, they spend a million dollars, a couple million dollars, provide 20 new jobs, they're in?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time, comments, very informative.
Thanks, Mr. Beal. Mr. Wagner?
Since you brought up Ferguson Waterworks, what amount of acreage would that proposal burn up?
I believe it's 8 point something.
It just says 8 plus, plus or minus.
8 point something acres.
That's basically just a warehouse?
It is a, yes, it is a warehouse with outside storage, and then they have the ability to actually build a little bit more there as well. So that was taking, taking the Aberdeen location there, and then they're also going to be consolidating from their Baltimore county, so they'll be, they'll be closing that, so that's more stuff here in the county.
You mentioned offering some of the businesses that have already taken advantage of this in the past that were in the vicinity. Could you run through just a few of those, and maybe, do you have a number of employees for each one of them?
Oh, I don't. We have the, the total capital investment in the last 12 years, but I don't have total employees. But just to give you some names of some of the ones in the Edgewood-Joppa enterprise zone that have taken advantage of this would be Coles, Band Crates, Smith's Detection, Agco, Hampton Inn and Suites, Luna's House, all in the Edgewood-Joppa enterprise zone.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Wagner. Redners, Stack and Store, there's a couple other ones.
Thank you. Mr. Woods?
Thank you. Do have a quick follow-up. The, the April 15 thing, I don't know why it's, keeps coming back to me as a hangup here, but it, I was thinking back to the other ones, it, it just seems awfully rushed for us. Is that, what's, I mean, it just seems rushed, it feels like we don't even have enough time to, like, let it die or span out if we wanted to go that route, you know, and, I mean, did the state change something on us, or? No, April 15th and, and October 15th are deadlines.
So if...
Excuse me.
That's fine, thank you.
Mr. Beal?
I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mr. Beal. I'm back to Mr. Woods' question. Okay, so if we don't meet the April 15 deadline, then we have to meet the October 15 deadline, which would give them the opportunity to qualify or apply for at what point in time?
The applications are due to us by October 1st. So in the Ferguson case, they would make their application prior to being approved in an enterprise zone.
Okay, so, but my question is, let's say that somebody that was, or we were looking to place into the enterprise zone didn't make the April 15 deadline, but we placed them in there, say, on, by October 15. At what point then would they be able to apply?
So, so the, the deadlines are, that we're talking about for April, for April 15th and October 15th is for our, our application to the state for the expansion of the enterprise zone. All, all companies that are trying to get approved to be a company that's in the enterprise zone, we have all those come in at October, October 1st. They could send in at any point in time during the year if they want, that's just the deadline. Then we work directly with the state to try to actually figure out, you know, when, when the project's going to start, when it's going to complete and all that. So just try to coordinate and follow everything through from, from start to finish. But the deadlines for, for, for us, the, you know, there's a few reasons why we're doing it for the April 15th, one being that the state request, you know, requested and recommended that we get it done sooner. And then the second was also because of council not, not always meeting in the summer, so it was going to just kind of be very hard to get through everything that way. And then also with, we mentioned Ferguson being able to actually apply, being in an enterprise zone, if their property wasn't in an enterprise zone and they're filling out an application, it'd be very hard to come before you and say, you know, we're trying to approve this company for enterprise zone tax credits, but they're not in the enterprise zone yet.
Mr. President? Mr. Johnson?
Just a, we're talking a lot about Ferguson, but the Abingdon Business Park, what's the rush in doing this for the Abingdon Business Park when it hasn't even gone through the entire process? Could you speak on that?
Sure, I would just say...
Please refrain from any, any noise, please.
That's, that's why I mentioned earlier that this does not in any way affect that, the project development aspect of that. It still has to go through all of its community input meetings, all of its development approval process, just like it would any other project. This is to prepare for the future of that project, which at some point it most likely will be developed, one way or the other. So this would have the incentives in place for the future. The reason we wish to bring it all in at one time is because it is a very intensive application, you know, basically a thick book that needs to be prepared for the state each time. So the idea being that rather than to come in and do that every six months and add on to it and create that book every time, with the cost of county employees and staff and, and paper and all the things that go along with that, we'd rather do it at one time rather than piecemeal it.
So that...
Mr. Woods?
That brings up another question. So you're saying that, all right, we expand the, this zone, Ferguson, what was the name of the one?
Abingdon Business.
Abingdon Business, and all these other ones that you're, the ones that are listed on here are parcels. No one gets that credit yet. We're just, right now, we're just expanding the...
Correct. They still have to make an application outside of this.
And then it comes back to us for approval.
Yes.
So we'll be voting on Ferguson, Abingdon, whatever other ones, again, at some other point.
Yes.
Mr. Janzer-Dennett?
Is there, I thought you said earlier, there's a limit of how much can be approved in a year?
10% expansion at any one time.
So, so of a whole calendar year, correct?
I don't think that's anyone, yeah. I think it's any time you make an amendment to the enterprise. You can't amend more than 10%.
So it could be 10% now and 10% not.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Beal?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, so let's get down to the nitty-gritty here, okay. Having in Woods, we're going to expand that. I've been kind of beating around the bush a little here. Now, that project, okay, it moves forward. Now, they really can't get the tax credit or apply for that tax credit fully until that project is complete. Am I correct?
Correct. Yes.
So that project may not be complete, say, even if they got started today for a year, maybe two. Correct?
Yes.
So, again, I'm going to come back to Mr. Johnson's question. What's the rush? I mean, because to me, the way I understand it, the tax credit is a whole separate application.
That's correct.
Theoretically speaking, it actually could, because the developer could subdivide land and, and do different parcels at different times. Sort of like they did with, with Eastgate, that development. And that gets subdivided and they work, they're not going to build the whole park out at one time, so they'll go separate, or maybe they'll sell a parcel to a, an existing company that's here in the county that maybe grew out of their space and needs to stay, it needs a new building, so they might do that. We don't know what they'll do. So technically speaking, it could be sooner, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, but the bottom line is, at this point in time, it's not going to hold them up from developing or stop them from applying for the tax credit or a later date. There's no financial loss to anyone if they, if we wait and approve the enterprise zone at a later date. Am I correct?
Correct. And they, they still have to fill out, they still have to apply. So if they don't apply, or if they miss deadlines, I mean, there's no, they still have to be approved.
Okay, I just, I'm just wanting to know, that's all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Beal. Anyone else? Mr. Janzer-Dennett?
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, sorry, mic's not. One more question. If they didn't apply for that, why are they included in the development? You said they didn't apply, right?
Well, they would have to apply in the future to take advantage of the tax credit. And they haven't applied yet for that.
But, but did they imply to be in the enterprise zone, that that parcel land applied to be in the enterprise zone?
There's no formal application for that. It's more we put forth potential projects.
So, so we put forth that, not that they came to a...
Right, we're trying to plan ahead for it.
Okay, all right. That's what we want to know. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon? Anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. President, we have nine. Mary Lee Stritch, followed by Reverend John B. Ward.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, I'm Mary Lee Stritch. I live in Abingdon, Maryland, in Philadelphia Estates. Okay? The citizens of Abingdon, whose lives will be severely and irreparably impacted by this project, first learned about Abingdon Woods, now renamed the Aberdeen Business Park, in January. We vowed to fight it because we had serious concerns about the effect this massive project would have on the area residents and the wetlands on the property. We know the increased traffic that would be generated on Route 24, Route 924, Route 7, and Abingdon Road would result in even more rolling backups on a daily basis. In his State of the County address, County Executive Barry Glassman made it sound as if this project was a done deal, approved without any concerns for the opinions of the citizens, and without any regard that much of the land for the project has been designated wetlands. Then, yesterday, on April 1st, we became aware of Resolution 007-19, Edgewood-Joppa Enterprise Zone Expansion. According to recent articles in the Aegis, it seemed as if the Harford County government was striving to provide more transparency in all matters to its citizens. The misleading and inappropriate name of this resolution seems to indicate that the county council or someone was hoping that the opponents of this project would be unaware of this resolution that will provide tax incentives to the developer using our taxpayer dollars. It will help the developer to find tenants for these buildings. There's no guarantee... There's no guarantee that these buildings are going to have tenants. Our money will be going to help finance a project that the citizens of Abingdon do not want, a project that we strongly oppose. I urge the county council representatives to vote no to Resolution zero zero dash nineteen. Maybe there is a chance that this project is not written in stone. Maybe if such incentives are not provided, the developer will be unable to proceed with this project. If the county council representatives vote yes, it is proof that you are willing to use taxpayer dollars to support something we vehemently oppose. It will be lasting proof that we, the citizens of Abingdon, will be facing a severely detrimental impact to our lives, a future in which corporate greed and government desires far outweigh public concerns and environmental health. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is John Ward, W-A-R-D. I live at fourteen fifty Abingdon Road in Abingdon, two, one oh oh nine.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and members of the council, for the opportunity to share some thoughts with you about this particular resolution. I want to commend the gentleman who just preceded me in their presentation about this particular business park. They presented a very interesting concept about a lot of money that can be made, and certainly ways to get investors to join in this particular venture. But my concern is for the people of the two parishes that I pastor, Prince of Peace in Edgewood and Saint Francis de Sales in Abingdon. Those of you that know these areas realize that we are a middle and lower-middle-class community, I suppose, if we look at the socio-economic structure of these two parishes, and that many of the people in those areas have worked very hard for many years to attain a sense of security in their property. And the reality is that if you travel on Abingdon Road on any Sunday morning, you will see the need for traffic control by our very competent Hartford County Sheriff's Department because of the number of people coming and going into our church. If you travel on Abingdon Road any particular day of the week, you will see parents driving in and dropping their children off at our preschool. If you travel on Abingdon Road around rush hour, you will see me or my associate, who live in the same house, sitting in the driveway, hoping that within the next fifteen minutes we might be able to get out of the driveway to get to Wegman so we can pick up dinner. There is no room for that kind of traffic that is going to be generated by this particular project. The other thing that concerns me is the property values for people who have bought in the various areas, the various subdivisions. They, many are what we term house poor. They are spending most of their income to pay for the house that they live in. That affects us all in a number of ways. To be quite honest, it affects my collection sometimes. But even more importantly, it affects their ability to be able to provide for their families. And this particular project is going to decrease their property values, and they will never get out of those homes, the amount of money that they've put into them. The other thing that concerns me as I read the resolution is that there are a few errors, at least to my understanding, especially when it says that the county council believes that the expansion of the Edgewood-Joppa Enterprise Zone will be beneficial to both business interests and residents in the area. I don't think that that's absolutely necessarily the truth. I can certainly assure you that some of the businesses in the Abingdon area are very concerned that this is going to have a detrimental effect upon them. And I know it's gonna have a detrimental effect on traffic coming into and out of my business, the church. It's important for any county and any town and any culture to have progress. But when progress comes at the expense of other human beings, this alleged progress simply does not outweigh the problems that it's going to bring. And because of that, I respectfully ask for this resolution number double oh seven dash nineteen, interesting numerology, isn't it? To be defeated. Thank you for your time, and thanks to the many people who are here and interested in this. God bless you.
Thank you, Reverend.
Cindy Arthur, followed by William Ves- Vesperton?
Hi, I live at sixteen oh nine Van Bieber Road in Edgewood, and this is gonna affect me a great deal. Um, that's where the starting point of this whole project is, is at ninety-five and twenty-four and Edgewood Road, which they're going to, I already have one business that just closed down there. The area does need revitalization. Go across the street, look at the taco place and that hotel. It's pretty nasty. Plasky Highway, since I've lived there, it's, it's a dump anymore. The whole area does need revitalization. I don't think it needs more warehouses. We already have enough. This is being put into the middle of a, of communities that have been built. There, it's not sitting on the edge of a community, it's sitting in the middle of them. It's all the way around, three, three sides of it is houses. And they're going to build these massive warehouses that I don't think they're gonna generate anything for us. Lakeside has vacancies, Fashion Way has vacancies. I, I see them all the time, and I don't see where this is going to help any, have any incentive on the county or the Edgewood-Joppa area whatsoever. Because I think Plasky Highway needs a lot of revitalization. I think they can redo a lot down there and be able to, they have great access on Plasky Highway. They don't need our private little road back there to have five hundred tractor-trailers coming up and down. I mean, this warehouse is going to be, these warehouses are gonna be huge, and that's exactly what this is be, being done, is they want capital to be able to get these people to come in and invest so that they can get them built and they can start having and selling them off. And yes, I think we do need to oppose this very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arthur. Name and address, please.
William Vesperton, nineteen nineteen Cypress Drive, Blair. I, it, it, what comes to my mind is that, um, this seems to be coming up very fast with very little notification of people. I really didn't see a big thing in the Aegis about it or anything else. But the main thing is, has there been environmental impact study? Has there been a highway study for the impact on the roads? You know, I think the world is getting a little nuts, and Europe has found this out, that you don't develop, and the lady before me, if you have a business or have something, redo it. Use that footprint, but don't go ahead and put more warehouses and take up land and have it as an, as an excuse just for dollars. And you're talking about the number of people in a warehouse per square foot? Hell, you can count them on your hand. So I don't understand the value of the Abingdon area to have this, and the environmental impact on it, especially wetlands. I mean, we're talking about global warming, we're talking about a whole lot of issues that are gonna come up. Most of you people and me are gonna be dead in twenty years.
Not me, sir.
You may be earlier. If you go, if you go, if you go on ninety, if you go on twenty-four, you'll probably reach it earlier. So, the thing is, people are going a little bit of nuts. You're going down a highway, they go through traffic lights, they will not look at the speed limits. If you go through up at a mall, you've got a red light, you're waiting to go and make a left. Almost a minute later, they're still making lefts in front of you. So, the thing is, you don't, I mean, why not take the mall and mall and, and blacktop it all, all around it, and be done with it? Then we won't have any worried about walking or body, riding a bike or doing anything. So I think you need an impact on, on environment, you need it, and I don't see this be a big impact for jobs. But why not take the existing footprint and build on news? And then you'll make the whole area much better, and then hire people who can work at that, those places, who live down there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bonnie Vick, followed by Angela Rose.
Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, uh, council members. You know, I, I live at eleven oh six Colton Court, Cokesbury, Ramana. On any given day, when I come out of my driveway, Tweaksberry Road, and I try and make a left or a right, there's traffic that lined up from Route forty all the way over to Route seven. I want you to picture, add just ten tractor-trailer trucks on that. And also, that bridge that goes over that railroad track there is only rated for thirty-three thousand pounds. Most of those trucks will be carrying seven to eighty, a hundred thousand pounds. So is the county gonna build a, a new bridge there for them? I expect not. Now, also, just imagine that you are on ninety-five, seventy-seven, eight, you're heading north and trying to make that exit there. Can you imagine what it's gonna be like, if fifteen or twenty trucks are trying to make that left, and then get up on twenty-four, and then make another left for them to go into that property there? We'll have a parking lot in our county on ninety-five without collecting any toll. I guarantee you. Also, they talked about the, the presentation here on March the sixth. Lot number one, one million fifty-six thousand square feet. Now, to me, that sounds like a sizable amount. Lot number two, six hundred thousand square feet. Lot number three, three hundred thousand square feet. That's a lot of, uh, square footage there. And then they talked about building, uh, stores, but they gave no timeline on the stores. That could be fifteen, twenty years from now. They only want to do those, uh, warehouses, and they want for us, the taxpayers, to subsidize that. I mean, the gentleman did a, they get a, I guess they did their job well, I guess they worked for the state or whoever, but we, we shouldn't be, uh, hoodwinked into this none whatsoever, because this is a bad deal for us. I was down in Carolina the, uh, weekend for a funeral, and they, uh, some friends of mine say Hartford County is nothing but warehouses now. That's what we're becoming. We're becoming the warehouse capital of the east coast. And not that those warehouses are producing livable wages, they're not. You see them built, then they, they, you see them empty. That's what has happened, and that, like the young lady said, here's a warehouse gonna be placed right in the middle of, I don't know how many neighborhoods, four or five, ten neighborhoods. And you talk about the wetland, can you imagine traveling down Route seven, and you know where Ha Ha Branch Creek comes underneath, uh, Route seven? Can you imagine what that would be like once they put all the concrete up above there? We'll be elegant city in Hartford County. I guarantee you that. And we, as taxpayers, they're asking us to help subsidize that. And I say, councilman, I, I implore you all, please, please, do not support this triple oh seven, triple O dash nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Council President, fellow councilmen. Uh, my name is Angela Rose, and I'm representing the Hartford County Chamber of Commerce located at one zero eight South Bond Street. The Hartford County Chamber of Commerce supports the expansion of the Edgewood-Joppa Enterprise Zone. The current enterprise zones have proven beneficial to both business interest and residents in those areas, and encourage the expansion and renovation of many businesses located in those areas. Frida Lay, Smuckers, Clorox, Home Two Suites, Hampton Inn and Suites, Luna's House, and Redners are just a few examples of successful business operating in empire, M, enterprise zones. Expanding the Edgewood-Joppa Enterprise Zone provides the opportunity for increased economic stability with, for example, the creation and/or addition of quality jobs. Hartford County's enterprise zones have allowed our business community to grow and prosper. For these reasons, the Hartford County Chamber of Commerce supports the expansion of the Edgewood-Joppa Enterprise Zone and zero zero seven dash nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Arthur Benzer, followed by Deanna Kilron?
Good evening. My name's Arthur Benzer. I live at twelve thirteen Van Bieber Road, Edgewood, two one zero four zero. Been there since nineteen seventy-six, and I've seen a lot of changes in Hartford County, as anybody has. Anyway, the whole idea of this Abingdon Woods Business Park is ridiculous, and I'm not gonna stand up here and talk about things that people have brought out more eloquently than myself, and we've all heard all these stories. But I want to commend the council this evening for speaking up and asking good questions about the enterprise zone. And I don't believe in funding this without taxpayer dollars and shooting ourselves in a foot with it. And the idea of, uh, that was made, made about if, get this put in now, rather than wait, someone will have to do paperwork, et cetera, later. The paperwork's already been done, so you just hold that back and do it later if it's necessary or appropriate. So I just don't want to jump the gun on that, and like I said, I don't see any need for us to fund something that the majority of us don't approve of anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name and address, please.
Yes. Raise it up a little bit. Let's see. It's up as far as it's gonna go here? Little adjustment there. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that. My name is Dr. Deanna Harkins Kilron, and my address is nine oh one Alexandria Court in Bel Air, Maryland, two one zero one four. Thank you for offering me the opportunity to speak tonight on Resolution zero zero seven dash nineteen. I'm here to speak up today for the voiceless wetlands that may be adversely impacted by this enterprise zone, otherwise known as the Abingdon Business Park. Wetlands are the soggy marshes founds, found along- Wetlands are the soggy marshes found along shorelines and floodplains. They do more for us than we do for them. The value of wetlands extends beyond the evenings and early spring like now, when a chorus of peepers makes the woods come alive with the sound of their music, or when you stumble upon a male wood duck in a secluded forest pond and marvel at its beauty. I know, Mr. Vincenti, you carve wood ducks. I myself do as well. Wetlands of all sizes provide real economic benefits by recharging groundwater, mitigating floods, and cleansing pollutants out of runoff water. Despite these essential services, wetlands, especially small and seasonal ones, are often underappreciated and underprotected. Many rural and suburban neighborhoods rely on groundwater, for example, Harford County. Adequate groundwater recharge is a growing issue. Wetlands, in fact, are effective at transferring surface water to groundwater. Their usefulness extends beyond their precise location. Buyers of property in which nearby wetlands have been destroyed may find their well water limited and require municipal supplies, which is a real cost to taxpayers. Wetlands are also important breeding grounds for amphibians, which control mosquitoes. Wetlands capture runoff from storms, reducing the risk of flooding. They're also home to bacteria that are effective at removing nitrogen pollution from runoff waters. Wetlands even beat seawalls when it comes to protecting people and wildlife from rising seas. Maryland has even passed legislation to limit the construction of seawalls, all to help protect wetlands as they have always protected us. In summary, wetlands play vital roles. They provide flood and erosion control, protect from rising seas, create habitat for thousands of species, and defend us from violent storms. Sadly, Maryland has already lost 45 to 65 percent of her original wetlands. But we don't have to continue our destructive ways. We know better. We now know wetlands are important ecosystems that we all depend on, and they're worth protecting. Let's do the right thing today and protect our remaining wetlands as they have always protected us. I urge you to oppose Resolution 007-19. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Barbara Rysacker.
Barbara Rysacker from Joppa Town. I'm really happy to follow such a beautiful speech because it helps with what I'm going to say. I'm here in kind of an uncomfortable position because I understand this land was zoned back when I was on the county council. But I would like to give some historic perspective to that and also give some kudos to the county and how it's grown since then and improved its wisdom, at least for some folks. Back, I have no idea how I voted on that, I don't remember, but back then, we looked at maps as a plain, flat piece of paper with lines drawn on it. And the idea was to keep the commercial and industrial development in the Route 40 corridor. That's probably why that particular piece was zoned at that time. Now, since then, there has been an incredible amount of information, study, science, and growth in Harford County government, and we, I want to say that Mr. Glassman and his administration, who presented to the prior county council, and many of you were on that, a wonderful plan called the Greenways Master Plan, and you all voted for it. And that was a giant leap, quantum leap forward in planning, land use planning, planning for people, planning for the future, planning for our environment, for this county. That particular piece of property, what's it called, the Abingdon Business Park, is, takes up the entire Greenways area that is on that master plan. So this, somehow, there needs to be some downzoning. I know that's a nasty word. It was when I was on the county council. I'm sure it's a nasty word for you. We've all learned, and I hope at least we will not approve this particular resolution for that particular piece of property. I don't understand why the Ferguson property isn't totally considered in the enterprise zone. I hope when somebody did the design control, it won't be just piles of pipes lying out like other things on Route 40. Hopefully, it will have some design criteria. The other question I have is, once you give these tax credits, and supposedly they're good for 10 years, and they're only good if you employ so many people, who goes to see when they close one of these buildings and no longer have any employees? Do they take away the tax credits, and do you have to pay back? I'm just urging you, please, defeat Resolution 001719. I'm sure we can help the Ferguson people get their tax credits if they need them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There is no one else signed up, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. With no one else signed up, this public hearing will be closed, and we will be considering this at our next meeting. Thank you. So at this time, the council will be sitting or acting as the zoning board of appeals, and chair calls to order zoning board of appeals for case number 5889, Bel Air Road LLC, Robert Cook and Dean Gonzalez. Mr. Stover?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. I'm going to be briefed tonight. You'll notice that I'm the only attorney that's here. This is a board of appeals case that was brought a few months ago as a request for a variance to disturb isolated nine-totto wetlands and an NRD buffer of 25 feet that was granted by the board of appeals a few months ago. One person did appear at that hearing and thus had standing to appeal. Her name's Ms. Levy. She is represented by David Lynch of Stark &amp; Keenan and also People's Counsel Brian Young. All three councils have been meeting numerous times over the last two, three weeks to try to reach a resolution in this matter, and we have done so verbally and by email. Part of that resolution will include a revised exhibit to be prepared by Bay State Land Services, the engineer for the applicant, which will then be incorporated into a condition. So I say all that to say we've worked it out, we've come to a resolution, we believe that is satisfactory for both the applicants as well as the party who has standing to file an appeal. We've consulted with Mr. Kearney as the proper way to handle this because we don't, sitting here tonight, have that final exhibit. And he suggested, and we all agreed, that we would ask the council, Mr. Vincenti, to continue, not postpone, but continue the hearing two weeks to April the 16th. The reason we don't want to postpone, obviously, is that the advertising has been done, we don't want to have to restart that clock over again. So with your indulges, with the council's indulgence, knowing that we believe a settlement is soon forthcoming, which would include additional considerations or requirements of the decision that the council continue this matter to the 16th.
So we're asking for a recess, then?
Yes, that's the way that I would term it. Since you already opened the hearing, I was advertised for tonight, you certainly are within your rights to recess it to a future date, and I believe that there is an appropriate date of April 16, 2019, and we're 3:00 to 7:15 to be either on that date.
So it sounds like a reasonable request by all parties, council. So if there's, unless there's an objection, we will continue this final argument, April 16, 2019, at 7:15 in these chambers.
And for the record, I should say that this was an agreement by all three councils. They're not here, but Mr. Lynch and Mr. Youngworth asked me to convey that they are in agreement with this request.
Thank you, Mr. Stover. Then this hearing is, I guess, in recess. Thank you.
Thank you.